This is the August ninth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Acushnet Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda today is the minutes from July twelfth. Does anybody have any questions or clarifications to those minutes?
I make a motion, Pete accepted.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the budget.
Alright, so we are still very early into FY twenty-four. I have just a few notes regarding the budget. So I did submit our two longevity of payments to two of our staff numbers, and that was processed in last pay period. So what is going to remain there would be five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents, because this was done before Dino left, and that would have been sent to Dino. So that's just gonna stay like that until the end of this fiscal year. And then the other thing I have noted here is our materials. I purchased some new books in adult and children, and along with DVDs. There's not many DVDs being put out right now, but what is popular in sales is what I ordered. And right now, we are at five point five percent in our materials. Other than that, it's still pretty early, so I don't have really much to say about the budget.
The, the sales, I know we paid that for, for this year already, right? So that overage, was that the discount that they, that they gave us on that line? It's ninety-seven point seven percent?
You're talking about?
The sales?
Sales way?
Yeah.
Um, so yes, that is, I have it highlighted for sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But so, sales and the tech support from sales, those are the two overages there. Am I saying that right? So what we were, the bill that we were given for the tech support, for example, was one thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. So there was a difference of one hundred and sixty-one dollars that is left over.
Right, so it looks like we've paid both the tech support and the sales side, and there's still a little bit of money left over.
Yes, there is, yes.
Because they, sometimes they have like a credit or like something like that, but so, but we're, we've, we've now paid those two for the year.
Yes, I submitted it.
Perfect.
But I did submit them, and I also, what you don't see here is there's also a sales invoice for Overdrive, which is electronic resources, and that one was taken out of the materials.
Okay. Yep.
It's just a no special line for that, right?
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
It's just all clumped into that.
No, that's great that we're over.
Yes.
I mean, or, you know, we have a little bit of extra money, you know, in case we need it somewhere else.
Yes.
So that will, will come.
Oh, yes. And then what's also done through sales is the computers, which we'll talk about in the future.
Fine.
Yes.
Sounds good. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay. Do you have a motion?
We accept. Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. For old business, we have an update regarding the septic tank.
Yes, so as you know, our plumbing situation has been a bit of a problem since I've started. So the first Monday that I was here, there was a flooding incident in the public bathroom. So it's been ongoing, it's been fixed, and then it comes back. So ultimately, I was like, okay, let's, let's go at this at a different way. So the septic tank was pumped on July tenth. I, so I contacted Mr. Sesspool, they came in, pumped it out, went on their way. I called them back to ask how much was pumped out, because they don't really say that in the invoice, and they said roughly two thousand gallons. I contacted the DPW to ask the size of our septic tank, and they believe it is two thousand gallons, so the septic tank was completely full. So once that was completed, I felt the flooding situation, the clogging situation would have been dealt with, but it wasn't. A week later, it happened again. There was a massive clog in the public bathroom, the drain on the floor was backed up, the toilet was backed up. So I contacted a company who has more industrial equipment for plumbing. So I contacted Bass Ready Ruta, and they came in. What they ended up doing was they unclogged from the inside to the septic tank, and the septic tank into the building. So they noticed that there was a lot of toilet paper, wads and wads of toilet paper, in the pipings, the way the piping is downstairs, it's at a right degree angle, so things are just getting stuck at the bottom. We did recently switch over our paper materials to a company, and I asked if their toilet paper was septic safe. They waited a little bit, because they wanted to confirm, and they said it was. So I was like, okay, so it's not the toilet paper. So Bass Ready, you know, they were able to unclog both ends, and then what they did is they ran a special neon dye from the public bathroom to see how fast it would go to the septic tank, and it was done instantly. So between the septic tank, it was three hundred and eighty dollars, and that I used the stock gift account to pay for. And then Bass Ready, I, it was six hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and I also used the stock gift account. So far, you know, this was done on, on July seventeenth, and so far, we've knocked on wood. We haven't had any issues with the plumbing. So I'm hoping that was, you know, I just needed, I think what happened was these little quick fixes. We needed something strong to release the, the wads of toilet paper down there. So that is back with regarding the plumbing. So so far, we've been good, and let's keep it this way.
Did they say anything about like, like maintenance to do?
So Mr. Sesspool said that, that we should check on it yearly?
For as far as the septic, right?
The septic, yes, yes. So check the septic tank yearly.
Did they say anything about like the wads of toilet, like are they just gonna build up again?
No, they didn't say anything. What the, the plumber noticed was that, so downstairs with the, the pipes lead, it's at a right degree angle, and right above the septic tank, not the septic tank, the sub pump, there's just slapped on like plumber's tape? So it does drip when it gets full of water and stuff. I don't know the history of why it was, was taped.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. It's something I have to look into. But what happens is he says that because when things get stuck, the tape there, the, that's holding a leak, I'm assuming, will just drip, 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 drip. The good news, it drips into the sub pump.
Yeah.
But the plumbing, like, you know, I don't know plumbing, but like it's at a right degree angle, which if you think about, is really difficult for water to flow down and then to remove something. So, and I think with the, also, the constant use in the summer, where you have, you know, people revolving in and out of the restrooms during the concerts, I think it's just, it's not giving enough time to break down.
Gotcha.
But we have opened both restrooms during our big events, so that way the flow can, you know, people can trickle, people can trickle down to that, to the public bathroom, they can trickle down to this side of this restroom. But right now, we're, you know, summer concerts are done except for one surprise concert, but, but, but it's, it's been fine, so we haven't had anything regarding the plumbing.
That sounds good, at least it's under control.
Yes, yes. I should have just called the industrial companies to be good with.
Well, that's alright.
I know, I know, I know.
Yeah, so that's alright. We have an update regarding the purchase of the, the new, the five new computers and staff computers and the monitors.
Yes, so the five new staff computers and monitors. The quote I was originally given last meeting did not include the fees for Microsoft Office and for installing and setting up the PCs. The, the good news is that the monitors, the price went down, so they're now actually ninety-nine dollars and seven cents. So the difference between the quote that, the final quote and the quote that was given last meeting is a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and forty-five dollars, which is not bad. But, so regarding the PCs, I have received the monitors. I have switched out the monitors in the staff area, and what I did with the monitors at the staff area is I put them on the public PCs. The public PC monitors, they were a little outdated, they were still squared. I mean, it's not gonna make the computer any faster, but it just looks better, and it's, we're getting a little bit, they were just, they were outdated. So, but the ones that were on the public computers are now in my office. And then the towers, so the, the computer, that takes a little bit longer, because it needs to be set up by sales. So I haven't heard anything, because I can imagine they're pretty backed up, because everyone else, you know, ordered new computers during the beginning of this fiscal year. So that's what I have to say about the, the computers. It's, it happened real fast. And then the invoice I just submitted yesterday to Town Hall.
I mean, not a hundred and thirty-five dollars, that's not bad at all for the difference. No, I mean, what we saved in the, what you saved in the price of the monitors, I mean, that's not bad at all.
Yeah, and I was iffy about the monitors, but honestly, I'm glad I did it.
Good.
And, you know, I told staff that if it's too big, I can, you know, maximize the size of the cursor, the font, and do anything. But I think it's better on the eyes also, because it's more, it's a better technology than the older ones that we had. And then even the public computers, those were, they're so heavy.
No, I get it.
But I swapped those out, so now, you know, the older ones, I'll figure out what to do with them.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on computers, on septic systems? Moving on to new business, the status of the front awning replacement.
So the front awning has been an ongoing issue even before my arrival. So the awning was created from scratch, and it's currently downstairs in our basement. We reached out to the person who created it. Last time we spoke was July, I didn't speak to him, Sandra did. So July twentieth, and the message was that they'll come and do it. But this has been going on now for, I've been here two months, so it's been going on for two months. The concern that we have is it's, the opening is now, the opening of the library is exposed to the elements, to, there was WASP one day, we saw they were like floating around with the holes there. Yesterday, we had that insane weather. You know, water is just going in through the hole that's above the front door, which is definitely not safe. So I would like to figure out a way that we can really push this, to really get that on and up, because pretty soon it's gonna get pulled again. You know, we don't want to cause more damage that maybe there's already some there. So I am, we're looking for ideas in how we can get this back up. I don't know if we have to hire someone, or if anyone has any other ideas on how to get this awning back up on the front door, because we can't sit around and wait anymore when, you know, I mean, we're lucky that, you know, water didn't come in yesterday, because the street was literally a river. So I'll leave it open to all of you, if you can think of something. I mean, we can keep contacting this person, but, you know.
Well, it was supposed to be done, correct me if I'm wrong, it was supposed to be up by July fourth?
Yes, and then if you look back in the other meetings, it was even supposed to be done before, like right after Dino left, so that was May.
So that was May, and then it was July fourth, and then they were contacted in June, uh, July, like twentieth, and then now it's, oh yeah, I'll get there, and we're August ninth now. So as far as I know, it's done?
So far, yeah.
I believe it just needs to go, like go up.
It's absolutely gorgeous, it just needs to go up from the basement. Uh, my other concern is I hope it fits out of that basement, because it is big, it's huge. But it's just, it's just sitting there, and I don't know.
Right. And I know John said that he was, he was gonna help Jim put it up.
Yeah.
But.
I don't know if they've contacted each other or whatnot, maybe we should.
I mean, I could reach out to Jim again and then try to put him in contact with John, and see if we can try to, you know, get something done that way.
And if not, we can, I don't know, like hire a craftsman, a carpenter to put that up?
Yeah, that's tough, because I don't know that they're gonna wanna put something up that someone else built, you know what I mean? That's where I think we're gonna run into problems. So I think we'd probably have to defer to John and see what he thinks on that.
When is he home?
When is he back?
Yeah.
Next week?
Oh, good, yep.
Yeah, he'll be back next week. So I can at least reach out to Jim, see what his thoughts are, and then have, kind of like put them in contact with each other, and then see if they can together come up with a plan?
Yes. And if, for some reason, something happens and it can't be done, we could temporarily figure out a way to mark it, which I really don't wanna do.
Don't wanna do.
But I'm just scared of, you know, it getting colder.
Right. Okay.
I don't wanna protect it.
I will do that. Okay, next is a complaint received regarding the library's flower beds.
So this past Friday, August fourth, I received a phone call regarding our flower beds on the front building. This patron was very upset that the conditions were deplorable. I explained that, they, they actually, before I even explained, they told me they've contacted Town Hall that to complain about the flower beds. Town Hall said that there's just not enough staff to take care of it, and to see what the library board could do, and to bring it up at a meeting. So she brought ideas of, well, what if you contacted the Boy Scouts? And, you know, I would do it if, you know, I just didn't wanna get arrested, and I'm like, no one's gonna arrest you from, you know, looking at the flowers. And I told her, I'm very concerned, you know, it's, my concern right now is getting that awning back up. It's not the flower beds. Honestly, yeah, it's overgrown, but I have other fish to fry.
Well, who takes care of the flower beds at Town Hall?
I don't know, but I think this might have been Connie, I guess.
Yeah.
So maybe the Friends meeting tonight, it could be brought up, there might be somebody in that group that knows something.
Yeah, good idea. Beautification.
But is that still in existence today?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, so that's another name.
So we could maybe float it by the Friends meeting, and then if not, we can reach out to the beautification.
Good idea.
Okay.
I, no, I think beautification was Connie also.
Oh, it was Connie also.
And Donna, back in the day, those two, I don't know who took it.
And I think there's a couple, because it's, it's on one of the committees, like, they're always looking for people, like, but maybe we can reach out to them and see.
Okay.
I mean, somebody has to do like the parting ways building, because they have all those, by the gazebo and everything, they, gotta be somebody that does that, because they always look really nice.
And there's even, I just, I went to Town Hall this morning, there's two pots in the front of the building that have these beautiful, like tropical flowers.
Is that where all the custodians are centered now at Town Hall?
I don't think so. I think they're still, I think they're still working in all of the buildings.
They're still working, because our custo is still here, but technically is part of, of Town Hall now. But this complaint, you know, I just wanted to bring it up.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, it's, it's.
Um, you know.
Well, and thank you to the patron for realizing, like, hey, listen, this is, we, you know, we, we wanted to look nice, and I'm sure the patron does too, yeah.
And what about the budget, who would pay for that?
That's the other thing.
Well, and that's the thing.
You know, a landscaper. I don't know if it's something the Friends would wanna do. I know, and, you know, I explained to the patron, like, we are getting to like, you know, summer is ending soon. Most of the stuff, you know, will just be dying, and that's not acceptable, and I'm like.
Well, right, because there's weeds and, you know.
Yeah, I know.
But I mean, I, I like the idea about the volunteer, like, if there's people, you know, not necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, it's not that big, it's just, you know.
The Friends is not a huge group, and I, I can't even remember who might be coming tonight, but.
Well, I would say, talk about it there, and see what happens. And then we could always, you know, report back, and then we can, we can think about taking it to the beautification committee, or asking for volunteers, if people wanna do it. I mean, it's a short window, really, right? You're gonna figure, it's like, maybe like April, if we're lucky, to like, maybe September, October, so that, that short window of, and I mean.
I mean, this, it started July, June, July, it was absolutely gorgeous. You know, the flowers that we had there, but I think things, you know, were starting to die out, and I'm not sure what to be picked, you know, I, I'm not.
I mean, I think, I think it definitely has to be somebody that knows, somebody who knows like flowers or whatever. But I think there's enough people in the town and around them, they don't think we necessarily have to hire a landscaper.
I spoke to the, the previous director, and there was someone that worked for the town that would take care of the gardening, of the garden, the flower bed.
Yep.
Don't know what happened to that position. But, you know, I think that would be wonderful to have, to reach out to the volunteers. I will definitely, I will be at the meeting tonight for Friends. So I will bring it up and see what they say, and then we can take it from there.
Yep, definitely do that, and we will definitely do something about it, so that, I mean, like you said, it's dwindling down, but even if we have somebody that can come and just clean it up for the fall, and then get, kind of get back on it for the spring, I think.
Yeah, I think like a pool or something.
Yes, absolutely. Alright, we have the director's report.
Alright, so the director's report, I just wanted to add a couple things that I did not put into the director's report. One of them, which I thought was really important, is I met with the rep from the Massachusetts Library System for our area, her, her name is Jen, Jean, I'm sorry. And we went over all the resources that are available to directors, and I thought that was fantastic. I gave a tour of the library, backgrounds of the library, and I learned quite a few things that are available to me as a director.
Oh, that's good.
And the other thing that we have that you might have seen in the YA area is the Weyman Museum is doing an oral history project. So we have a booth there that is a, like a podcast type booth, where you could go and give a ten-minute story of your, about living on the South Coast. I thought that was really cool, so it, it will be here until August eighteenth. And then for things that are on the director's report, I'm just gonna highlight a few. So I contacted Lark, which is, before my arrival, the toilet paper dispensers were switched over to this company that the town uses. So my instructions were to call them up to have to set up the paper towels and the soap dispensers. So on Friday, July fourteenth, they came out, switched out the paper towel rolls and the soap dispensers, and I ordered a new round of supplies that day, soap for the regular paper rolls, toilet paper rolls, and soap. So it was pretty seamless, and we've been with that since. A big thing that I'm excited about is I interviewed two candidates for the children's room assistant position. I reached out to the best candidate. Right now, it's not definitive, but we have a start date of September fifth. So we'll finally have a full-time children's room assistant in the fall, so I'm super excited. We're just fixing our, she's just getting her welcome packet, and we're just wrapping up all these loose ends here with that. But it's been a long process, and I'm glad that it's coming to an end, and I can't wait to start, I can't wait, her name's Ren, I can't wait for Ren to start working here.
And when, October?
Uh, I'm sorry, September fifth.
No, you said that, I missed it.
Oh. Alright, so just a, a couple of tech things that had happened over the library. So we were finally switched over to the town's fiber optic network. So Nick came over on July twenty-fourth and switched over our internet from Comcast through sales to the town's, super fast. And Nick also installed our new phones that are connected to the, to the new network. So currently, we have two phones, so Sandra and I both have two phones, one that directly connects to the town, and the other one is just a regular line. In the future, they hope to eliminate the Verizon, the AT&amp;T bill that we have here, and just have everything done through this line, the, the town's line. And I will say, we've had, we haven't had any connectivity issues with the internet. Before Nick left for that day, I made sure I was able to print from the public PCs, able to print from the staff PCs, and everything went fine. So, and so far, you know.
That's great.
It's been, it's been great. There was a little concern of if it wasn't going to play well, but sales was also involved with this conversation between myself, Nick, and the IT at sales, so it was literally just like a flip of a switch. The only thing is, right now, the Comcast box for sales, we're trying to figure out which one is there, so that way they can take it back. But that, I was really thrilled with that, and now we just have to wait for those new computers, and we'll be up to date in a few days.
Sounds good.
So that's it for the director's report, and I just wanted to throw in, so yesterday, I completed the Eris portion of the state aid. So these, there are two reports that I have to do to receive state aid. One of them is Eris, and the other one is the financial one. So Eris is mostly circulating numbers, collection numbers, staffing numbers, and I just have a few that I highlighted that I thought were interesting. So for example, our holdings of adult books decreased three point five percent. That was because the collection was weeded, so adult fiction was weeded. But we are a small library, we have small space, so it's not a bad thing. It just means we have more room to purchase newer items, maybe items that will go out more often. There also was a decrease in the adult eBooks borrow, so it was a nine percent decrease, which I thought was interesting, but there was an eleven percent increase in the audiobooks that were downloaded. So maybe, maybe patrons are not realizing, or maybe audiobooks are the trend now. So I thought that was very interesting. And the same thing happened in, this one kind of blew my mind. In the children's downloadable audiobooks, it increased by a hundred and twenty-five percent.
Wow.
You know, I, I think it's fascinating that, you know, if you have a physical book and an audiobook, to have them both at the same time, maybe patrons are realizing that, I don't know. But I just thought that was like, whoa, that's a big increase there. Our total print material, so that's magazines, books, anything that you can physically touch, decreased by two percent, which probably is just, it's coming from the weeded items from the adult collection. So circulation information, so items that circulated. So in the adult section, in the adult books, we had a seven percent increase in circulating materials. So that's always good when numbers cert, when numbers go up for circulation. In young adult, it increased by nineteen percent, and I believe that's due to one of two things. One, younger book, young adult books are becoming really popular across all ages, especially for adults. And the other thing is book talk. So it's a, it's like a trend of, of short videos on TikTok of books. So it's a, it's like a trend of short videos on TikTok of books that are really fascinating. And that's how Colleen Hoover became who she is today. So I think that might have something to do with it.
There you go, lacking a trend.
I know, I'm just, you know, putting things here. The other circulating statistic, which has been a trend for a while, a downward trend, is that the children's videos, so VHSs, DVDs and so forth, went down thirty-eight percent. And I believe that's due because of streaming services. So our physical book circulation in total, so that's everything we have here, three point five percent increase.
That's great.
Audio circulation went up thirty-six percent. So audiobooks and regular musical CDs. This is always, because we're on a border of Behaven, New Bedford, we had a six percent increase of circulation to patrons outside of Akishan. So that's exciting to see. And then total attendance, so people coming in and out of the library for anything. It is an estimate, we don't have an official people count, it went up twenty-three percent this year. It also could be due to COVID restrictions last year, but I just noted it because I thought it was a good, a good increase. And then this one, I don't know, and I couldn't think of any theories. So our library website had a sixty percent increase in views. It went from nine thousand four hundred and fifty-seven to fifteen thousand this year.
Maybe before people know about it.
I think it might be the outside concerts.
Yes.
People are looking for.
So I was like, oh, maybe, you know, people are looking at our website and in the back of my mind, I'm like, okay.
Yeah, they're concerts, it seems like everywhere, like, you know, what days, everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out like, you know, what's happening with the, you know, any of the programs.
Yeah, so I was like, oh, I'm gonna make note of that. So, and I'm gonna leave you with that because I thought that was really fascinating.
Okay, what was that number?
Which one?
Library website increase.
A sixty percent increase.
That's great.
Yes.
Well, people are looking at it, so, I was just gonna say, keep doing what you're doing.
Yes. And yeah, so I'll leave, that was the last important one on ARIS, the one I find really interesting. And that's all I have for the director's report. Uh, oh, wait a minute.
Now, The Globe had an article on audiobooks, I think it's, audiobooks are not cheating.
They're not, honestly, because you still have to focus, you know?
Well, that increase could also be because there's people that are now going back to work, so they're having to drive, so you lose their reading time because you're driving, but you can still listen to them while you're driving.
Yes.
So that might be a little bit of a, you know, because I know people have to go back to work now, so.
It's, but it's great to see an increase in anything.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, we still have a decent print collection, and, you know, we do have to, we don't have the space to have everything, so, but I don't see it as a negative. But yeah, that's the conclusion of the director's report.
Any questions or anything on that director's report? Good, all right. Well, so future business, we have the next meeting will be. Yep, Tuesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, September thirteenth at twelve thirty. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
If you don't have any other business, then we need a motion.
Make a motion to the jury?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This August ninth, twenty twenty-three, meeting of the Akishan Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned, it is one thirty-five. Thank you.